Welcome to the Mount Clemens City Commission Meeting for Monday, March 15th, 2021. It's 7:00 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Campbell.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Good now.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Crop.
Here.
Mensah. Voorhees.
Here.
Is Commissioner Mensah, she is here, correct?
She's connecting her audio.
Okay, thank you.
She is shown as being on the meeting, but she has neither audio nor video.
Did everybody, I'm sorry. Did we get everybody? Yes, I have everybody as present. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. We're going to begin with a proclamation this evening. Whereas the people of Mount Clemens through their duly elected officials have a long history of recognizing those individuals and their myths who give themselves for the human and public good. And whereas Mr. Gerald Cool was born in Detroit and lived here in Mount Clemens with his wife Colette for almost 50 years. And whereas Mr. Cool had an extensive public service career in and around the city of Mount Clemens, he was a member of the Knights of Columbus Men's Club and Mount Clemens Optimist Club, an active member of the St. Louis Parish Clinton Township, a member of the Parish Council, and a volunteer for Meals on Meals, and where Mr. Cool was a founding member of the Mount Clemens Optimist Club. He served for several years as the treasurer and was active with any event related to the club. Gerald was one of the first to welcome and mentor the pride of Mount Clemens Junior Optimist Club. He had a passion and dedication for the essay and oratorical contest conducted every year at Mount Clemens High Schools. And whereas Gerald Cool was employed in Tool and Die and co-founded B&amp;B Mold of Detroit with his father-in-law before moving the company to Warren. In his free time, Gerald enjoyed playing tennis and spending time with his family. Whereas, the city of Mount Clemens would like to take a moment and express our appreciation for Gerald Cool. For the number of years he served the Mount Clemens area and its residents, and those he served should be reminded that he represented his community and district with the utmost respect and made sure that their best interests were made known. Now therefore, I Laura Crop, Mayor of the City of Mount Clemens, on behalf and the City of the Commission, I'm sorry, on behalf and the City of City Commission and all our citizens, present this proclamation to Mr. Gerald Cool's family, his wife, daughter, and siblings, and extended our and extend our heartfelt sorrow for the loss of Gerald Cool as a husband, father, brother, and longstanding member of our community, dated March 15th, 2021. Thank you very much. We'll move on now. We, I don't believe, do we have a member of Mr. Cool's family? Anyone, Patrick?
I'm not seeing anyone or hands going up.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure that they have received a copy of that. On to monthly department reports, item 4B. Mr. Johnson, do you want to go ahead and talk about those reports? Are we going to even file?
Oh, we'll ask you to receive and file the department reports and also the revenue and expenditure goals and objectives reports and the 2020 Pacer Report, which is an evaluation of all of the city's roads. And I would very much encourage everyone to take a good look at that report.
Go ahead.
An item F, which is a presentation of the Mount Clemens Property Opportunities website. Mr. Tingley is going to walk us through that. And Patrick, Brian is going to need to be able to share a screen.
Well, can I go through item B first, Mr. Johnson? And with item B, is there anyone from the commission that has any comments or questions about the monthly department reports? We'll go through that first. No, okay, hearing none. Then we can move on to the revenue and expenditures report. Did anyone have any questions or comments from that report? And I'm not still not hearing anything from this from Commissioner Mensah. Her audio is still not.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, there she is.
I had to switch computers.
I'm glad you were able to.
Can we talk about the Pacer Report?
Okay, well, let me get there first. Okay, anyone with revenue and expenditure? Goals and objectives? All right, we'll go with the Pacer Report. Go ahead, Commissioner Mensah, you had a question?
I was very shocked to look at this report today. Seventy-eight percent of our roads are rated fair or poor. Seventy-eight percent. According to the report, it says we need about seventy-six million dollars to fix these roads. And the roads have decreased in viability from 2017 when this report was last run. I was absolutely floored by the fact that we need seventy-eight million dollars to fix our roads. We've been talking about roads for a while. Residents have been talking about their roads for a while. I think we're going to have to have a, a clear conversation on how we're going to get some of these done. I looked at all these streets, not one of our roads is rated a 10, which is on a scale of one to 10, 10 is the best. Not one. The majority of them are fair or poor. And so I just want to express my complete shock, consternation, upset, and bewilderment on how we've gotten this far. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I guess I wasn't shocked because we have been warned about this. I know Mr. Wood has presented this situation to us year after year. And year after year, we have not found any or discussed it even, just have kind of shelled it saying it's, we don't have the money. So I think this report is glaring mandate to, we have to look at this situation. We have to figure out how to find the money or to allocate some of the current budget towards getting these roads fixed. We almost, any of us that drive in this city know, we don't need a report to tell us that the roads are falling apart. So we do need to make it a priority of this commission to find, even if it's a long-term solution. We know we can't wave the magic wand and, and start working on it tomorrow. We know that. But we have to figure out what a long-term viable solution is and at least start chipping away at the problem.
Thank you. Sure. Anyone else who has a comment or question about agenda item 4E? Okay, moving on to presentation of Mount Clemens Property Opportunity Website, Mr. Tingley.
Mr. Johnson, do you want to introduce the item better briefly?
That's fine. You can go ahead and do it, Brian.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so hopefully everybody can see this. But so can everybody see that right now?
Yes.
So if you recall, we did enter into an arrangement with the county, the city and its DDA did for some economic development services. And one of the prime goals of that was to develop a website that we could use to help market downtown properties. And that, that is what you're looking at here. You'll notice that it does have a somewhat of a difficult URL. So we went ahead and we, and we purchased our own domain. And that is a www dot thinkmtc dot com, just to make it much easier to get to. The county also has a page, a dedicated page where you can follow, where you can get, get to this site from. So I'm going to go through it briefly. We're very excited and happy to be able to get this out into the public. And there's a lot of good information, so I will try to try my best to be brief. We're looking at the homepage here. And again, the goal here is to highlight available downtown properties. There's many areas where you can click into, primarily, what you'll see up here is the tabs at the top. Before we get into the actual properties portion, I did want to just click into the overview. In this area, it just gives, gives an overview of the city in terms of where it's at in the greater metro Detroit area. And as you scroll down, this, this is a GIS based site. If you scroll down, information will pop up for you again, highlighting the city within the greater metro Detroit area. Again, within Macomb County. And then it does nail down into the city itself. So again, this is just, the goal behind this is if somebody, a developer perhaps from out of state, a site selector, interested in the area, they can learn more about the city and the region. The site also provides some really good demographic data on the city as well as demographics within certain drive time. So it's called a drive time analysis. So if you go into the demographics area, and again, as you scroll down, it will highlight different, different demographics, populations, income, and things like that. And again, depending on the speed of your Wi-Fi, this will load, load quicker or slower. So again, just some demographic information. We also have a gallery tour here. We thought this would be a nice touch. A gallery tour, just a more of a visual tour again for outsiders coming in, seeing photos of the, of the city where it's located. And as you scroll down, more photos will, will generate. Again, I'm going through this very quickly here because there is a lot of information. On the resources tab, these are just some links, some various economic development links, links for the county, the city, the state, different grant programs. We have our DDA facade program on here. And then lastly, getting into the properties tool. And this is where we highlight properties. And again, the intent of this arrangement was just focusing on the downtown. So what this does is it highlights properties that are for lease or for sale, or properties that might be vacant and this could be a good redevelopment opportunity. If you click into these properties, you can either click into the map, or you can click over here. So if a property is for lease, we'll just select the Cherry Street Mall properties. It will highlight it on the map. You can click in here. There's links to our BSNA tax information. If there is a real estate sheet from a broker available, we also have the ability to pull that up as well for some more detailed information on those sites. So that, that's the, the website in a nutshell. Again, we're very, very excited. We will be looking and talking with the county about a longer term arrangement where we could potentially expand the citywide. You know, there will be some maintenance of the site that will need to be done. Some ongoing maintenance because we want this to be as real time as possible in terms of the information. So we will hopefully be bringing another agreement to the City Commission at some point in the near future. And that is all that I have right now unless there are any questions.
Brian, can you remind everyone how much that agreement was?
It was a three-month arrangement. It was $2,700, and that was split between the city and the DDA. So I think this, being able to get this website for that amount of money, I think is a big win for the city and its businesses.
I think this is comprehensive of a website. I mean, what would you say in your professional experience would cost upwards of?
Yeah, I mean, you know, maybe ten, $10,000 probably.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or Mr. Tingley? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and move on to our next agenda item. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mayor Crop, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
By Commissioner Voorhees?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Fournier. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please. Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Moving on to public participation. This is the portion of the meeting where we, we accept public input. We ask that you give us your full name, your address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. And we also will ask that you give us your first name to start so that we can start a line and make sure that everything's orderly. I see a hand up. Mr. Barnes, I'll go ahead and put you on the list. Is there anyone who else would like to give me their first name? Teresa, I see yours. Mr. Nelson, I see your hand.
DL Bradley.
Bishop Bradley, I'll go ahead and put you on.
Thank you.
Pastor Lance Pittman, I see.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ruthie.
Thank you, Ruthie.
Teresa McGarrett.
Teresa, I've got you. Mike Chitell, I see you. I'll put you on the list.
Thank you.
Jean Dixon, got you too. If I haven't called your name, let's see if I've got all the hands raised. I do. Do, is there anyone else that I haven't? That I haven't called that would like to speak?
Mayor, did you get George?
I did not. Thank you, George. Anyone else? Okay, I'll go ahead and we'll start. Thomas, give us your full name, your address, and we'll start in three minutes.
My name is Thomas Barnes. I live at 291 Jones Street in Mount Clemens.
Go ahead.
Um, Mount Clemens Community School, School Board President and longtime Mount Clemens resident Earl Rickman was quoted in the 2007 Macomb Daily article by saying, "This board has zero dollars from its general fund to use to support the center. The last thing we want to do is put up a building that will be empty and another black eye on this community." Back in 2018, there was a murder that happened on Court Street. At that time, being a youth mentor and running a program for over 20 years, my wife and I decided that it was time to get active. So we volunteered a large amount of our time at the then Jermaine Jackson-Carnes Community Center, bringing in an assortment of new programmings. In our time there, we started a, we started and implemented a karate program, a Friday night open gym, a 4-H program, a regular Thursday night boys mentoring meeting. We started a study hall program that incentivized children with the use of the basketball court to do their homework and begins to start pulling their grades up. We started to see immediate community buy-in for all of our efforts at the community center. We revived the community garden there and even went outside and spruce up the dilapidated basketball court that sits on the property there and named it after a, the former girls' basketball coach and Michigan Hall of Fame coach, Big Green. During our time there, the community outpouring was absolutely amazing. From August of 2018 until March of 2020, we ran regular programming at the Jermaine Jackson Community Center. At that time, the litigation against the Jermaine Jackson group had soared, and the school district and the Jermaine Jackson group had broken, decided to part ways. After that time, when that group was finally removed from the building, the building has sat from July of 2020 until now, empty and vacant. And yet, the black eye that Earl Rickman wished would not be in that community. I am saying as a Mount Clemens resident, taxpayer, and business owner, it is time for the city of Mount Clemens to own this responsibility to its children and residents and do what's right by this community center. It, it is far gone time for us to pass the buck and kick the can down the road, hoping that somebody else will pick it up. Our residents deserve better.
Thank you. Teresa McGarrett.
Good evening, Teresa McGarrett, 19 Incher Street in Mount Clemens. So Mayor and the Commissioners, everyone, I come to you as a county employee. My position at the time that I'm speaking about was 14 years as a resource advocate. My responsibility was to service just a few subsidized housing units. And so I took it upon myself and I let the task continue. I serviced every, every Macomb County subsidized housing unit. Where we had the most challenge was in the city of Mount Clemens. You have Park Place Towers, Doze Manor, the North of Burrow Apartments, and Mount Clemens Housing. So I'll tell you what happened. We were only allowed in those buildings for about an hour time during nine to five. So they, we started going to the Carnes Center where they let us come in, where we began to do taxes for people in the community. They were lining up, no fighting, no drinking. They needed help. We did taxes, we did Medicare enrollment, we applied food stamp enrollment, Medicaid, all of that for senior state, you serving. I just want you to know, I am still an employee. We are currently paying eviction notices for those seniors in those subsidized housing units because they cannot have access to a computer, they have no knowledge and no transportation to bring their documents to us for us to pay their rent. So now we're going to them. But if Carnes Centers was there, we were allowed to go in their community where all of those seniors that you service need the help. They are being evicted because they don't have a computer, they don't have no one to help them, and they need something there for seniors and for the children. So the city, the residents you serve, seniors, youth will know what your choice is. These are grandparents who went to live out on their own, and they are being evicted again because they have the resource, the transportation to get somewhere to get some help. But they would walk to Carnes Center in their neighborhood to get the help that they needed. Please consider that. Please consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nelson.
Am I on?
You sure are.
I'm asking for Nelson Dexon, 615 Wellington Crescent, Mount Clemens. I'm speaking on behalf of the Greater Memorial Church Missionary Baptist Church. I believe the Commission has received a request for a motor parade celebrating our church's 100th anniversary. Simply asking for consideration for approval of that parade. If there's anything that needs to be done or modified, we'd be more than happy to work with the officials to do that. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Nelson, you are on the agenda for 10, item 10C. So when we get to our consent agenda, you are listed there.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go ahead and move on to Bishop Bradley.
Bishop DL Bradley, 22645 Quinn Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. I personally don't think that Carnes is about funding. I personally think that it is about something else. And that is where we find ourselves today at 2021 with the clock turning back to yesteryear, faced with racism, coverted, evident but never spoken. My question is, is why can't Carnes be a Mount Clemens, not Eastside, but a, a Mount Clemens citywide community center where all black and white can come back by the city? Unless it can only be if, it can only happen if it's controlled by whites and not blacks. But my question is, is why must black youth cross into white areas to attend facilities there? And white youth are never encouraged to cross and attend facilities in black areas here such as the Carnes Community Center? Well, for one reason, anytime anything of consequence is built, is built there. And if it's built here like Carnes, the powerful move to shut it down so that your youth there will never have an opportunity to come here and we can become one family. I think the bigger question is not your fault, is why do we allow this to continue? If the only way to gain ground is to fight for it, then I think we need to get to the point where we rise to the occasion, whether it's in the streets or even today as we're doing today at City Hall. We must realize that this cause, this cause, this Carnes Community to Center issue could just be the spark to awaken us out of sleep, to realize that if there's going to be a better day, we better realize that we need to fight for it ourselves through the power of the vote and the power of our feet. And so at the next election, our vote will be a vote that you will hear and you will remember. Because our vote is going to be based on your vote, whatever your vote is concerning this community center. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Pastor Lance Pittman.
I'm Pastor Lance Pittman. I am not a resident of Clinton Township or Mount Clemens, but here as a member of the Macomb County Ministerial Alliance and certainly support our fellow member, Mr. Barnes. I grew up in an era where young people had no place to go but the streets. And I escaped those streets, thankfully, alive while others I knew did not. And I served this nation's air force and I lived on Selfridge International Guard Base where my kids went to school in Mount Clemens. And after I left the military, I was able to serve the community there, hiring our heroes for what used to be Mount Clemens General, now McLaren Hospital there, right there in the city. And so I think it's important for kids like mine to be able to have a place to go. And not just the kids, but we talked about seniors as well. But for the people, I heard earlier about the community, and we have servants of the community on this Zoom call tonight. Everybody should be in agreement about this center and its viability for the children and the seniors in the community. And I just, I just stopped by to say that I'm in full support. Whatever we need to do to make sure that this center keeps going, I think we need to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Ruthie? Go ahead.
Yes. What I'd just like to say, ditto to what Pastor stated as well.
Ruthie, can you give us your full name?
Yeah, sorry about that. Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Dane Street. I'd just like to say ditto to Pastor Bradley and to Sister McGarrett about what they stated, that it's part of this community. Community is the buzzword. Community, community. We have to have a place to go where people can come out and be part of the community and other organizations and facilities come in and enhance the community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh Mister McChattell?
Uh yes, I'd like to uh thank the City Commission for the proclamation tonight. They made for uh Jerry Cool. I've worked with him for over ten years in the Optimist Club and his concern has always been the children of Mount Clemens. And I'm glad to see we're able to recognize him. I also, not knowing this discussion was coming up on the Karn's Center, I know when that center originally opened up, it was uh open because of a grant from uh the federal government from Congressman Levin. And I'd offered the suggestion that maybe there should be a contact with Congressman Levin, especially since this funding has passed recently for a variety of things related to helping people out. See if any funding would be available to uh reopen that as a community center and be able to offer it to the entire community. I know from working on the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Family, we know there's a need out there to have places for the children to be able to go for activities that promote good, healthy habits as opposed to unhealthy habits related to drugs and vaping, et cetera. So I'd urge the Commission uh to make that contact with this, with the Congressman and maybe see if there's a way of getting that center reopened for the community with some funds from the federal government. And that's the end of my comments. I guess I should say Mike Schickell, eight seventy-five North Espinola Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan.
Thank you. Uh Miss Jean Dixon.
I think you're muted, Jean.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry. My name is Jean Dixon and I have two issues. Um I want to talk about um Greater Morning Star. So I know you heard um Deacon, um you told Deacon Jackson that he could speak later. Do I need to speak later concerning Greater Morning Star Car Parade or now?
Um now would be fine, yeah.
Okay, um I'm a member of Greater Morning Star and we will, we'll be celebrating our one hundredth church anniversary beginning on Good Friday. And that's April second. I'm here to ask that we get approval for the car parade to go through the city and to the other side of town and then back to the church at eighty-seven Robinson. We are very excited about this centennial anniversary and hope that you will help make this happen for us. Thank you. Now, my other thing I wanted to talk about was um the Karn's Center. I am a lifelong resident of Mount Clemens. Um I've been here, I was born in the fifties, so I can remember the old community center being at Park and North River Road. And it was within walking distance for everyone. Now, our children, if they need something, they have to go over on growth spade. That's a long walk, that's a very long way. And a parent would have to have transportation for them, other than that. But I feel like Jermaine Jackson has been a great help to the community. I don't have any children, but I love children. I worked in the school district for twenty-one years as a parent pro in special education. So children is a top priority for me. So if the city would please consider finding funding, even if we have to go back to like when the land, I believe I heard that the land was um gotten by the the um Catholic Archdiocese. So maybe we can contact them for some more funds. And like they said, Senator Levin, we need to make this happen for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh Mister George Kail.
Thank you, uh Mayor George Kail, one eighty Grand Ave. I wanted to emphasize that with the recently passed American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty, I have read some articles and have seen some press releases, especially from the Michigan Municipal League, that there is quite a bit of COVID uh relief funds available to local communities. Uh there's quite a bit even uh for a city such as Mount Clemens to get in line for. And I trust that the uh city manager and the community development director are aware of uh the funds and and will be aggressively seeking our fair share portion of those funds, whether it's for roadwork, Karn's Field, whatever we might be able to do uh to secure uh the funds, uh it would be good to, of course, uh get in line, if you will. Uh I also wanted to uh compliment the Community Development Department uh in combination with the uh Property Opportunities website, along with the new uh highly interactive zoning ordinance and what we're going to have on a presentation, I believe, in general business. I think the city's moving in the right direction to truly try to create a more inclusive community uh consistent with the strategic plan recently adopted in August of twenty twenty, to be, of course, more inclusive, to establish parks and recreational programs. I'm sorry I missed the work session earlier, which probably detailed more uh in regard to issues surrounding Karn's Field. Uh but if we put our minds to it, I'm sure we can uh come up with some sort of an idea to uh keep uh most of us happy. The last question or point I'd like to make, is this going to be an entirely new zoning ordinance in the body of everything that was submitted in the city documents? It it does look like everything is a a draft as of uh recently. Or are these strictly amendments? And if it's a brand new zoning ordinance from scratch, would that not then necessitate a first reading and public hearing of the zoning, the new zoning ordinance? Uh or is it just amendments to the zoning ordinance? Uh because, of course, I'm in support of the changes that are being made. It looks pretty darn good to me and it is consistent with the future land use map of trying to improve the footprint of the downtown. Uh other than that, I I trust everyone as well and anxious to uh get back to City Hall to where I can share documents and pass them out. But uh we we all know what we're talking about, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh just so you know, Mister Kail does say first reading of zoning ordinance amendments. They are listed as amendments. Thank you. Okay, we will go ahead and move on. Uh Mister um Mister Murray, do you have one question for you? Before we move on to general business, I'm sorry, or approval of the minutes? Um I just have one question for you before we move on. Um because we didn't move on to the um, because we did not uh cover the Karn's Community Discussion in the last, is there a way to go ahead and add that to this agenda, since it was posted on the last agenda?
Um I think you uh that would have had to have been done before you adopted the agenda.
Okay, so we can't, we can't just add, okay.
And and also, I'm I'm not too sure that everyone who wanted to speak in public participation actually spoke. They may have, but additional people as well, which I think you, uh you know, if we have another work session, they get the opportunity.
Okay, and since we said that in the last work session, okay.
One, one final note, Your Honor, uh as to Mister Kail. Uh it, it is a first reading of zoning ordinance amendments. Uh however, the old zoning ordinance will be repealed in its entire. So even even though it's, it's not labeled new zoning ordinance because it's going to have the same numbers, et cetera, it in reality is a new zoning ordinance and the old one will be repealed.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh the last meeting, several speakers asked some questions. Uh the first was Mister McCants, who asked about getting a no feeding animal sign in his neighborhood. He specifically referenced problems with deer. Since Mount Clemens does not have an ordinance prohibits feeding deer, we really cannot post such a sign. Mount Clemens only prohibits feeding pigeons, skulls, doves or waterfowl. Uh Mrs. Stevenson asked about grants for parks. Uh Advancing Macomb is actively pursuing grant opportunities for Mount Clemens Parks on our behalf and has done very well in uh acquiring such grants, uh particularly the seventy-five thousand that's already been uh obtained uh towards this fountain and also the sportport program. Uh Mister Delridge, Mrs. Delridge was interested in Karn's but did not ask any specific questions. I noted that this was going to be the topic of the discussion uh at the work session. We didn't actually get to the discussion portion of it. Uh so that will apparently be at the next uh meeting. Uh Mister Rick commented on the state of Mulberry Street. Uh Mulberry uh has a Pacer rating of two, north of Hampton Road and a rated of three south of it, which is, are both very poor. Uh we do have limited patching planned but not yet scheduled and there is no resurfacing planned at this time. And that's all my responses.
Okay, great. Anybody from the Commission have any questions or comments about the responses? We'll go ahead and move on to um approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve the regular City Commission meeting minutes for March first, twenty twenty-one.
Moved by Commissioner Hammond, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Uh roll call, please. Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay. Uh item nine uh A of general business, first reading of zoning ordinance amendments. Uh Mister Johnson?
Thank you. I'm going to again call in Mister Tingley.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, we don't have a motion first, I guess. We should uh entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the first reading and introduction of the zoning ordinance and set the date of the second reading and adoption from Monday, April fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Mensor, I'm sorry, supported by Commissioner Goodenough, was it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, uh go ahead, Mister Johnson, sorry about that.
Fine, I'm sorry. Uh I'm again going to call in Mister Tingley to present this, since this is his work uh and it's a, a very impressive piece of work indeed.
Thank you, Mister Johnson. Uh just in terms of background, uh after adoption of a master plan update in twenty sixteen, the city uh began the process of updating its zoning ordinance. The current ordinance uh was originally adopted in two thousand and three uh and has been amended several times since then. Uh these draft amendments were completed, uh reviewed by the Planning Commission in late twenty nineteen, um at which time they directed staff to have uh have them reviewed by the City Commission prior to the required public hearing. Um after several delays, one of which being the pandemic, city commissioners were finally provided the draft updates in October of twenty twenty, along with a memorandum uh highlighting the primary changes. And I did attach that memorandum, um which goes in a great detail again uh for you tonight. And we did ask for any feedback. Uh all feedback that we did receive at that, at that time was positive. Uh the next step was to move to the formal public hearing uh that is required with the Planning Commission. A public hearing notice was published uh in the Macomb Daily on February twelfth, twenty twenty-one, as well as posted to the city website. The Planning Commission held the required public hearing on March second uh twenty twenty-one, at which time no public comment was received. And at that meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the City Commission adopt the new zoning ordinance. In summary, the proposed amendments include reorganization of articles and overall improvements for clarity and ease of use, uh including a new digital interactive format, revisions to districts to implement recommendations from the master plan, map amendments to implement revised districts to better align with the future land use plan, amendments to implement best practices of the M E D C Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. And again, adoption of the ordinance is one of the items that we are, that we do need to do uh to be certified in that program. Uh we did create a table of uses to provide consistency across districts and corresponding clarification of definitions, as well as aligning uh aligning the ordinance with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and recent case law. And lastly, uh the ordinance does address uh goal one of the city's strategic plan related to economic development. Uh as with any ordinance, this is the first reading and introduction. Uh a second reading and adoption will follow at a subsequent meeting. After adoption, they noticed would be published uh within fifteen days and the effective date of the new ordinance would be ten days after publication. Um I just want to state that although this has been a lengthy process, much longer than what I would have liked, uh I am very proud of the work that has gone into producing the new zoning ordinance. I want to thank everyone involved for their patience and commitment to the project. Uh and I will add one other thing um in in terms of the R R C certification through the M E D C. Um after uh submission of this document, once it's approved, our last item would be an update to our capital improvement plan, which we initially submitted to the M E D C in twenty eighteen. And we do plan on updating that as part of the uh upcoming budget process. Thank you.
Sorry. Uh does anyone, thank you, Mister Tingley. Uh does anyone from the Commission have uh any questions or comments for Mister?
I just, I do.
Thank you, Mister Tingley. Mister Johnson, this is a great piece of work and very easy to use. And I know it's been a long time coming and I'm sure it's a great relief to have it finished. But uh thank you very much. Good, good job.
Thank you. Uh is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Mensor.
Uh I think the layout is is great. This, this was well done. It it's a beautiful document. And and just a couple of things. Um I was looking for uh the zoning ordinance on uh recreation of vehicles. We've talked about those before. It used to be under ten point three. Um but what's there now is just off-street parking uh in um and in ten point eight, we have two whole pages devoted to um parking of bikes. So um maybe you could uh point out the recreational vehicle thing to me later. Um I was wondering in section three, I took, I took a, you know, a good look through this. Um I wondered about the printing capabilities of the maps. Like if you wanted a specific area, if you wanted a, you know, a specific uh industrial zoned area, um how how that, you know, how that worked. Um in in section nine point, uh section nine, item D, I love, love, love the sustainability and low-impact design, the bio swales, the bio retention basins, the rain gardens. That is a fabulous uh addition and and I'm, I'm thrilled with that. And nine point seven B, um the sidewalks, I just had a commentary on that because it said sidewalks will be installed along both sides of all streets and private roads or drives. We do have several streets in Mount Clemens that do not have sidewalks. So I want to make sure that there is an understanding that those are like uh grandfathered in and that, you know, we're not going to suddenly, you know, tell them they have to have sidewalks. And then in twelve point three, I love the addition of the riverfront planned unit development discussion. And um I think, you know, I think that's a a discussion that, you know, we've talked about several times that's going to have to come i- if, you know, in a very serious vein. So thank you, Brian. This is, I think, uh it's going to be a beautiful addition to, you know, for anybody looking up zoning ordinances. Uh I think it's going to be much easier for them and I think it was really well done.
Just like to add, between um this document and then the um the new website that we had present, presented earlier, um I think if this, this whole package really brings Mount Clemens into the, you know, more modern times of being able to use online services to look at the city and use and uh, you know, be able to comply with ordinances and also uh find out information about our city. So I'm I'm so thankful that we have this and I think it really improves um uh the perception of Mount Clemens and I appreciate that very much. Sir, anyone else who has any questions or comments for Mister Tingley on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please. Goodnow? Commissioner Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Agenda item nine B, approved purchases and payments of invoices. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve purchase and payment of invoices as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell.
Or?
Supported by Commissioner Goodenough. Uh are there any questions or comments for uh purchases and payments? Hearing none? Uh roll call, please. Hammond?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item ten, consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell?
Or.
Supported by Commissioner Fournier. Rule call, please. Crap? Yes. Mensor?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Good now? Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eleven, city manager's report. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. The slight update on COVID nineteen, the curve has kind of leveled off and is actually moving very slightly upward for Michigan. But effective March eighth, they expanded who was eligible. March twenty second, they were supposed to be taking anybody age fifty or older, but they've recently announced that they'll be taking any adult, and I don't have that date in front of me, but that's very soon. So that's moving along well. It it seems that an awful lot of people I know in Mount Clemens have managed to get vaccinated. A lot of them have already received their second vaccination shot. Board of review is meeting met today and is also meeting tomorrow. American Rescue Plan, we've received an estimate that's, we're projected to receive about one point six million dollars from the American Rescue Plan. This is considerably less than an earlier estimate by SimCog, which was based on an earlier version of the bill. As we understand that, we've been told funds are available until expended and must be used to address the pandemic or its negative economic impacts, including replacing lost revenue delayed or decreased because of the pandemic. We do not have specific definitive rules as of yet. Meetings. Our authority to do remote public meetings expires at the end of this month. I talked to Representative Sowerby on, I think that was Friday, no, Thursday, and he does not believe that the Republicans will allow that to be extended. Our city commission chambers is far too small to hold a city commission meeting or other public meeting and maintain essential social distancing. So we're exploring alternative locations for public meetings if we're unable to continue meeting remotely. I have already had a conversation with the school superintendent, who's given me a verbal approval to let us use the school facility, the same room that they'll be using, which is their cafeteria. That also has the necessary hookups that we would be able to do a simultaneous broadcast over Zoom and YouTube. We have a potential development at one forty-one North Gross Spect that I want you to be aware of. This is a slightly over forty thousand square foot office and warehouse, which would become the new home of K E Electric Supply, which is currently across the street. This parcel, which was once a gravel pit and was once used as a driving range and a putt-putt course. They will be presenting a brownfield plan, which must be reviewed by our brownfield authority before it comes to the city commission. We have two vacancies and one expired appointment on that commission right now. So we're going to to need to make two appointments and one reappointment to the five-member authority very soon. Staff changes, wastewater superintendent Jason Peak has resigned effective April second. Jay will be sorely missed. He's a very, very fine employee and does an excellent job. Agenda distribution, unless there's an objection, we plan to stop emailing the actual agenda reports to commissioners, and instead we'll send links to the agenda and reports. This will reduce the number of files stored on your computers and reduce the amount of bandwidth used. If you actually want to print the reports, you'll still be able to do so because we'll just as we're doing now, under agenda, we publish the agenda with links to everything, so it's it's a hot link document. But under the reports section, we put the whole thing there as a single document. So if you actually want to print it without dealing with it one at a time, you just need to look that up and print. Revenue and expenditure report, we gave you the annotated version last, at the last month. This one we did not. The plan is to do the annotated version quarterly, and it will be the March, June, September, and December reports, which will be annotated by the finance director. The same report without Cliff's comments will be posted for other months. The January report, this one is not annotated. Then we have the future meeting schedule, and that concludes the city manager's report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Johnson? Hearing none? Move on to our second opportunity for the public to participate. If you would like to participate at this time, we'll ask for your first name. At this section, you receive two minutes, and of course, we'll need your full name when it's your turn to speak and your address. Is there anyone who would like to get in line?
Yes.
Okay, is that Dr. Early? Can I have your first name?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
What's your? My name is, my name is Joanne Jeanette.
Okay, Joanne, I will put you on the list.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to participate?
Dr. Early, my first name is Geneva, C H I N E V A.
C H, I'm sorry, tell me again, C H?
C H I N E V A.
Thank you. Okay, anyone after Joanne? Okay, we will go ahead and Mr. Burns?
For the last time tonight, Thomas Barnes, two ninety-one Jones Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan. I would like to end my comments tonight by stating that I believe in the new direction in the city of Mount Clemens. I believe in the new administration and all the positive changes that have happened to the city of Mount Clemens. I believe that we're on the right track. Now it is time to do what is right by our most at-risk and most vulnerable community. The city of Mount Clemens makes decisions to move money as it sees fit. I would like to remind the board, the city administration and the city employees, that only a few months ago, this very same board approved a one hundred thousand dollar stopgap loan for the Mount Clemens ice rink. And then later on, co-signed a three point one million dollar bond to save the Mount Clemens ice rink. Yet, when it comes down time to step up and hold the responsibility for the community center that you see so many residents hold so dear, we find ourselves spitting and sputtering. I would pray that this board, this commissioner, with the new leadership that we have in place, sees the value of this community center to this city as a whole and does the right thing here. And as I would like to remind everybody, including, it was stated in several meetings before, let's not get mucked up in the details. The city of Mount Clemens owns Carnes Field. So that means if I own a property and I build a garage, you rent the property from me and you build a garage on it, because I own the property, I still own the building. The city of Mount Clemens owns the Carnes Community Center and everything in Carnes Field. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Early, will you give us your full name and your address, please?
Yes, I'm Dr. Geneva Early, two one two four three Universal Avenue, East Point, Michigan.
It's eight o'clock.
Okay, go ahead.
As I don't live in Mount Clemens, but I wanted to let you know about having a community center closed. I live in East Point and have been for several years. Our community center closed in two thousand and eleven. It took to two thousand and eighteen for it to be sold, but in doing that time, our children had nowhere to go, our seniors had nowhere to go. People have no place in East Point to gather, to do activities, to have events, except our local churches, which has graciously opened up their doors many times to allow for us to do events. But we have seen a loss in residents because people decided if I can't send my kids somewhere for them to gather, if my seniors can't gather somewhere to be together, this is not a family-friendly town for us. So I would ask that you think about opening up that community center to give people a chance to be together, and if you have funding, seventy-five thousand dollars for a water fountain, you can find funding to support your local youth and seniors and people in need in order to have a community center. If you can come up with one point something million dollars to get an ice skating rink, you can come up with the money to keep that center open where it can support your local community. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne?
Did you, did you see my hand?
I didn't, but I'll add you to the list.
Thank you.
Joanne, go ahead.
Okay, did you my name and address?
Yes, please.
My name is Joanne Jeanette. That's G E N E T T E. My address is two four three two one Allard Street. That's Harrison Township, Michigan.
Okay, go ahead.
This is new to me, but I feel the need to come out here and support, in support of the Kern Center. I am a former resident of Mount Clemens. My children went to Mount Clemens schools. I do still have an active student in the Mount Clemens schools. This is the only program when my daughter got in trouble that was there to help her. I've also taught in the district, just to kind of give an example of where I come from. Wilson Park and the Y M C A Center were listed as alternative programs for youth and seniors. However, with limited access to resources and transportation, in some cases, these are not exactly considered local. Even myself at times who faced poverty would have loved to have my children in such programs as the Y M C A. But even with their financial assistance, could not afford my children that privilege. My question is, have or has anyone ever been a member of a single-parent household struggling to find resources or positive activities for their children? Excuse me. The specific question goes beyond encompassing Mount Clemens as a whole. This is an area that has specific needs. I have personally witnessed by volunteering my time with the after-school programs at the Kern Center and giving my teaching abilities. It seems like in the past, every time something comes along to improve something in this area that it has taken away, as if all of these things do not affect the city as a whole or even the members, the the number of children that are enrolled in the district, and it would be detrimental to so many people if this building was to not be funded to continue to stay open. Thank you.
Thank you. Bishop Bradley?
Yes, again, Bishop D O Bradley, two two six four five Quinn Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. My position still stands that I really don't believe that this is about funding. The question that I have is, what is the process or procedure? Because in both the planning board or the working session that was held previously, as well as this meeting, the community is at a disadvantage, limited by three minutes at the front end and two minutes at the back end. What is the procedure in Mount Clemens whereby we can be placed on the agenda of a board meeting so that we can take the time necessary to be able to share what we feel needs to be shared without being limited by three minutes or or two minutes? I know where in the township, Clinton Township, I can make a request to the clerk and then it will be placed on the agenda. I don't know if that's the same with the city of Mount Clemens, but I think that this needs to be on the agenda whereby the community can come with their charts and whatever else they have and and have the time to to present their case without the potential of being cut off because we've run out of time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this, we will move on to commissioners' comments. Mr. Bishop Bradley, you can contact the city manager's office or the clerk's office for information about the agenda. Moving on to commissioners' comments. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I want to give a special hello and congratulations to Ms. Dixon for all her work in the church centennial, and it was a pleasure to hear about the parade that she was asking about and the approval for that. So I just wish her all the best with everything that she's doing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodenough?
Well, I have heard a lot this evening, and I am in agreement with everyone who spoke this evening. I do believe us as commissioners, we are here to serve, provide a service, and that we need to do something about that Carnes Field. It does need to be open. It's a community-based, a center. It is needed. And I think we need to sit down and start to really put our heads together and forget about the past. I know we can't. I'm new on board, but I do realize and understand the severity of what is needed. I am a lifelong resident of of Mount Clemens, and I do remember many, many times of having centers open for children to go to brown, black, pink, or purple. With that being said, I look forward to working with the commission with an effective policy for the city of Mount Clemens, along with the community, so that we can make this city very, this center viable for all of the residents, so we can continue to talk about inclusivity for the center for Carnes Field. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensor?
First, I wanted to say, you know, my condolences to the Cool family. Jerry was one of the founding members of the Mount Clemens Optimist Club. And you know how life is very strange sometimes. I was lucky enough to talk to Jerry on Saturday night. He passed on Sunday. And we had a good conversation about the Optimist Club. It was all about Optimist Club business. Jerry was the member who always did the oratorical contests and the essay contests for the high school kids. He took great pleasure in, you know, reading those speeches and awarding the, you know, the scholarships that that came from it, and he will be very severely missed in the Optimist Club. I wanted to give a shout out to Jocelyn Ryan. She is a sixth grader at Saint Mary's Catholic School, and she was a participant in the twenty twenty-one Macomb Intermediate School District Spelling Bee. Congratulations, Jocelyn, on your participation in winning, you know, the spelling bee at your school. I also wanted to say congratulations to Dark Horse Productions of Mount Clemens, more commonly known as the, you know, Emerald Theater. They received a thirty-nine thousand and nine dollar Michigan Stages Survival Grant from the state. So congratulations to them. I hope that it, it, you know, helps keep your business viable. And I wanted to say congratulations to Greater Morning Star on their one hundred years. That's a a huge accomplishment and shows their longevity in the community. So congratulations for that. Some of the comments tonight on the cars were very interesting and very helpful, okay? There were suggestions on funding and grants and opportunities on how to pay for this because the bottom line is that there is a funding issue. There are things in the city like the seventy-six million dollars that we need for the roads, like the two million dollars we need. There are things in the city like the seventy-six million dollars that we need for the roads, like the two million dollars we need for the seawall, the one point two million dollars we need for the boardwalk, the half a million we're going to need for the new fire truck, and we can go on and on about that. So I appreciate the fact that some of the residents are looking ahead to see what can we do? Where can we get other assistance? And how can we keep the community center viable by joining forces and looking for other funding opportunities? So thank you for that. I think we would all like to see the community center stay open or reopen, as it were, into a viable, you know, community gathering place for everyone. So if we can work together on other funding opportunities, I think it would be the best thing possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank Brian Tingley for the zoning ordinance. This is, this was a big task and it, and it's a, it's a beautiful document. Also, the Think M T C website, I think will be great. It certainly profiles our downtown and our city, and I think that that will be a real asset. I'd also like to thank the Public Works Department. I drove down Crocker Boulevard on Saturday, and they were trimming the trees. And that's a very important project because those trees need to be pruned up to keep them away from the utility lines and and the damage that can be done. So congratulations to the Public Works Department. I too look forward to our next work session. I think we received a lot of information tonight. Hopefully, it'll be all in a positive sense. It's, it is a city asset. It belongs to the city, and we need to take care of it and run it. So I look forward to our next work session, and I'm glad that it will be at least an hour long, if not longer. And with that, once a clemite, always a clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Greater Morning Star on one hundred years on its anniversary, and I look forward to celebrating with them. And also, I want to thank everyone who had a chance to express how important Carnes during the center is to the community. I agree that the center is needed today as much as it was needed back in two thousand and seven. And also, as Mr. Barnes and Mr. McGarrett stated, the need of the community, not just the youth, but the seniors and just everyone in the community, the need to use the center. Also, the city administration is seeking resources to vitalize the center. We're also in the process of having the school district transfer or in the lease. So that's something that we also have to take into consideration. But again, I appreciate everyone's input, and I look forward to the next discussion and the city being able to revitalize Carnes Center.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier?
Thank you. My condolences to the family of Jerry Cool. I've known Jerry for many years, primarily through Saint Louis Church, especially condolences to his wife, Colette, and to Michelle, his daughter. He was very active in the Optimist Club as well as everything else you could, anything you wanted a volunteer for, Jerry was there to volunteer. And he really will be missed in so many ways. Also, congratulations to Greater Morning Star. I will look forward to celebrating with you. And I just want to say that to all the residents that have come out in support of Carnes Center, I am very grateful that you've let us know how much this means to you. I think that community centers are important, but I just want to remind you too that we just got this back. It's been part of the school, you know, it's leased to the school. It still is. We're just getting it back now, and I don't know, maybe I missed something, but I can't imagine us just walking away from this building or shutting it down. I'm sure we can find a way to support it. It's going to probably take the community involvement that we've seen tonight to make that happen and to make it a very viable community center, center, because we are, we do have limited funds. But I also believe this community, the entire community of Mount Clemens, can come together and make this happen. I truly believe that. So I look forward to working with all of you in the next meeting, and let's come up with a good plan and execute it. And we also need to, I say to my fellow commissioners, we can't kick the can down the road anymore. We have to address these roads. It's just, it's getting ridiculous. So I watched it get kicked down the road now that can for many years, long before I was on the commission. And it's time to address it. It will be painful. It won't be pretty, but we have to address it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to first say to Ms. Jean Dixon, please make sure you reach out to me or to or the city manager's office so that we can make sure that we get the Greater Morning Star a one hundred year proclamation done for your celebration. And thank you for your work on the car parade. I look forward to celebrating the one hundredth anniversary with Greater Morning Star. I had the pleasure of going to the Anton Art Center last week, and I saw the work of the student show, the student showcase. There was so much incredible student art from McComb County. And if you have the opportunity to go, I know that they have limited hours, but it is worth making an appointment or calling the art center and finding their hours out. Going to see that. They also have the cotton collection, a part of the cotton collection from, which is sometimes showcased at the, it's from the Minugian family, family, and it's a just a beautiful collection. So if you have, have the opportunity, the Anton Art Center is free and get information from their website about their hours of operation, and you won't be disappointed. I'd like to congratulate Phil Gilchrist. He happens to be our new Downtown Development Authority Board Chair, and he was voted in as our board chair at our last meeting, and so I'd like to thank him and congratulate him at the same time. I had the pleasure of helping the M C P group last week, held a fundraiser. The M C U P group is in charge of putting the, they do the sculpture program throughout the city. And last year, they were able to put out over ten different sculptures throughout the city, and the goal of the program is to double that for October. And so we are very close to that goal. And that fundraiser at Gumbo's enabled us to add two more to the sculptures for next year, but we are pretty close to that goal. If you have any interest in donating to that cause, please call the McComb Cultural Economic Partnership, and they will be glad to take your donations. I would like to thank all of the input that we received at both the work session and today's meeting during public participation for Carnes. And I, I know that each of the commissioners and myself will, and city staff, will take that into consideration, all of the comments. We wrote things down. We took notes, and we will take all of those things into consideration and, and I believe it's valuable feedback. I would like to just point out that less than thirty days ago, we received notice that the school is going to vacate their lease. We jumped into action at that point. We have been meeting, and we would have discussed this if we would have had time, but we have been meeting with the school district. We have been meeting with outside people that could come in, like the Boys and Girls Club, like the YMCA. We have been meeting with people to try and find partnerships, to try to find those resources so that because the school district closed that center, when the city takes control of that July first, it is not the city's intention to keep it closed. But we have to have a sustainable plan in place. So we have not been sitting on our hands. We have not been just idly hoping this will work out. We have taken action immediately because we believe that the center is a valuable piece of of resources for that, for our entire community, but especially where it's located. We understand that that community needs those resources. So please understand that we are taking action. And hopefully, we will be able to show you that and and kind of formulate a plan at our next meeting. And so, and like I said, thank you for your feedback, and it will be part of that. And we really appreciate all of you taking the time this evening. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor Crop, I move that we adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. Roll call, please.
I'm sir. Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell? Campbell? Commissioner?
Wake up.
Fournier?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop? Yes. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night. Thank you.